We'll now call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our first meeting in the month of November 2025. We will begin with a roll call of District One.
Deandre Knoxon, District One.
Elmo Bowie, Commissioner at Large.
Dedric Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner at Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum established. Six of the seven commission members present, and we will now be led in the pledges by Commissioner Abel Garza. I'm sorry, I skipped something. That's on my judgment. I'm sorry, thank you very much. We will have a special guest with us today, Pastor David Buckley of Sanford's Temple Church of God. And Pastor Buckley, if you can come on up and do the invocation, I got a little ahead of myself. And then we will be led in the pledges by Commissioner Garza. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you now for all things. God, thank you for last night's rest and this morning's rising. God, we thank you for the joy and the peace that we have. God, we thank you for every family that's here. God, thank you for our mayor and for all the commissioners that serve. God, we thank you for the community here in Texas City and the surrounding areas. God, we pray now that you watch over us and look over every family that's represented in this place. Look over our leaders of our city. God, we pray for your protection, God, and for all the workers and employees of this city. So now, God, we ask you, God, to do this in the mighty, mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Thank God, and amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Pastor Buckley. If you have any announcements or any things you'd like to share with the community about what's going on at Sanford's Temple, you can do so at this time.
Thank you, sir. Sanford's Temple, again, is one of the churches that's been in this area for about 70 years. Prior to Sanford's Temple, it was named Roar Memorial Church of God in Christ. It's one of the largest pene coastal churches in the nation, and so we just have our regular services. We invite you out to on Wednesday night Bible study. We are tackling the finances of what we need to do in terms of family. Also, on Sundays, we start at 9:15 for Sunday School. Midday service start at 11:00 a.m. We invite you all out to come out. And I always say, if you're looking for a quiet place, it's not Sanford's Temple. We have a good time in God. Thank you, God.
Okay, we are up to the portion of proclamations and presentations on our agenda. Today, we're going to be presenting a special certificate of recognition to Mr. Ronnie Oliver. I'd like to read that and have Mr. Oliver come on up as we read that. It says, the certificate, from the office of the mayor, the certificate of recognition is presented to Mr. Ronnie Oliver. The City of Texas City, Texas, on behalf of the citizens and city commission, does hereby present to Mr. Oliver in commemoration of his distinguished service and exemplary leadership in American Legion baseball. For nearly four decades, Mr. Oliver has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the development of young athletes, guiding multiple teams to national prominence, including a World Series championship in 2023. His dedication, integrity, and contributions to youth sports stand as a testament to his enduring legacy and are hereby formally acknowledged with gratitude and respect. In testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this fifth day of November 2025. This is signed by myself, mayor, and attested by our city secretary, Mr. Oliver. Is he here today? We certainly want to hold on to this for Mr. Oliver. I thought he was here. Maybe he's stuck in some of that traffic. But if he does come in, somebody just let me know and we'll re-present this. Not only the 2023 World Series, but I think they made a good playoff run this year as well, in 2025, earlier this year. And so we wanted to recognize Mr. Oliver and all coaches for the work that they do with the Little League throughout our community. All right. Next, we have a proclamation as we recognize Municipal Courts Week. And so I would like to present this proclamation to Ms. Connie Haley as she comes forward. Stand up and read this one. How about that? Whereas municipal courts play a vital role in preserving public safety, protecting the rights of individuals, and promoting the quality of life within the state of Texas, and whereas more Texans come in contact with municipal courts than any other court in the state, making these courts essential in shaping public perception and trust in the Texas judicial system. And whereas the City of Texas City proudly hosts the Texas City Municipal Court, a state judicial body whose judges are appointed under state law and serve as members of the Texas judiciary. And whereas the judges of the Texas City Municipal Court are bound by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Texas statutes, and the canons of judicial conduct, ensuring independent, fair, and impartial judgment, judicial decisions that are separate from the authority of this city commission, city officials, and city employees. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Dedric Johnson, in the City of Texas City, on behalf of this commission, do proclaim November 3rd through the 7th, this week, as Municipal Courts Week. And we extend appreciation to the judges and staff of the Texas City Municipal Court for their dedication to public service, fairness, and administrative justice. In testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this fifth day of November 2025, I want to present this to Ms. Connie Haley. She is our interim municipal court clerk. And this is signed by myself and attested by our city secretary, Mr. Mari Lee. Congratulations. If you'd like to say anything about municipal court to the citizens, you can do so at the podium if you like.
I think I'm good.
You're good? Thank you for everything y'all do. All right. At this time, we're up to reports. We have our reports from the Texas City Recreation and Tourism Department, Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, and we will have that report given by our very own Mr. Charlie. How you doing, Mr. Charlie?
How you doing? Thank you.
I was told, Ramari, I have to let you know when we need to change. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Charles Thompson, Assistant Superintendent for Parks. We're going to go over some of the projects we've done over the 2025 budget year. Okay? We've redone the dog park. We installed all new playgrounds, dog grounds, I guess you'd say, for the dogs. Both the large and small dog areas. We also re-renovated all the splash pads at Sanders, Goddard, and Carver. We had new cool deck, new paint put down. We did have to replace some of the features that were worn out. And we've got them all back up and running, and the kids are loving them. Trust me. Okay? We had the Sting Fountain, we had all the coping around. It was coming loose from the wall, so we had it re-secured, had any cracks filled, and we had it replastered. Carlos Garza Sports Complex, we had the irrigation at the football field and around the pavilion area redone. We had to have new controllers and a control box put in. We started on a project that we are still working on. We have been replacing the basketball goals in our parks. We were able to do Nestler, Johnson, Noble, Amaco, and Bay Street Park to get rid of the old equipment and come in with new. Oh, it didn't go? Okay. Carlos Garza Sports Complex, we did have the new cables that support the netting over the bleachers redone. They were getting corroded and bad, so we had all of them redone, and it's now good to go. Another sports, Carlos Garza Sports Complex, the five enclosures that enclose our electrical systems and our irrigation systems were all re-renovated. They were rotting, and we had them come in and redo them all. Goddard Park Major Field, we had the outfield fence redone and raised up to six foot. The old one was in needed repairs. Our Park Shop, the maintenance barn in our Park Shop area, we had the roof re-sealed from leaks. Rainbow Park Splash Pad, we had a new slide installed. It's a whale now, instead of an octopus. It's something that the kids really enjoy out there. The other one was showing wear pretty bad. Carver Park Concessions, we had the fumica redone in the concession stand and a new cooktop put in. We had the Tanger volunteer group for Earth Day come out. We had three volunteers come out to help with the planting at the Rainbow Scent Garden on April 17th. We also had them come out on April the 30th. We had five volunteers from Tanger help with the butterfly garden planting. We had the Girl Scout troop. There was 14 girls, third, fourth, and fifth grade, came to plant oak trees here in Nestler Park for their bronze award, which was a project for the community that will be sustainable for years to come. This project will help air quality, city wildlife, and the beautification of Nestler Park. All right, the good ones now. Juneteenth Kid Fish at Carver Park, another successful kid fish this year. We had 150-plus attendance this year. And the January Rainbow Trout Kid Fish at Carver Park, this one exceeded us way beyond. We had 225-plus participants in this event this year. The kid fishes are just growing. People are coming from all over. They're hearing about it from Louisiana to everywhere. So they're coming down to participate in our events. That's the last one? All right. Well, that's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do I have any questions of Mr. Thompson?
Great job, Charlie. Everything looks great. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We try very hard.
Yeah, I appreciate you and Byron and the rest of the crew for all you do for the kid fish. You guys do a great job helping them cast lines, teaching them how to hook lines, things like that. So I appreciate all your efforts.
We probably appreciate you coming out. Mayor, you came out. Couple of them we had. We appreciate y'all coming out.
Are we sure? Are we sure it's just kids fishing?
Oh, yeah, right. There's, yes, a lot of adults do come to fish, too.
Yeah, that's good. They have to show the kids how to bait the line and everything.
Right.
Two things. I'm glad that you finally freed Willie. I saw freed Willie.
Yeah, yeah. We have him contained. He's secured, but...
And the second thing is that Commissioner Clark and I have speech to the Boy Scouts, St. Mary's Boy Scouts, and I'm sure they would love to get the awards that the Girl Scouts and help and do whatever you need done. We may give you, I can give you the information that you can reach out to them.
Okay, yes, yeah. We have several, yeah, we have several organizations that we have that do stuff like that for us throughout the year.
It's a good cause. Thank you for all you do.
Great job.
All right, at this time, we are up to public comments. On the agenda, we have had no one who has submitted a request to address the commission, so we'll move forward with the consent agenda, item seven. Commissioners, you have before you items seven A through M. You've been provided these items for your consideration. If there's any of these that you would like pulled for further discussion?
I'd like to pull B.
Okay, item B. Any others, commissioners?
No.
Let's pull item K. I'm sorry.
A or B?
B.
Okay, B.
B. The first one was B, to be pulled by...
B or D?
B as in boy. And then K?
B as in beware.
Any others? If not, what's your question?
Motion to approve, Mayor. Items A through M on the consent agenda. Other than B and the other one.
A motion has been made to approve items A through M minus B and K. Motion made by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First item for consideration is item seven B, to consider and take action on resolution number 2025-122, approving and awarding commission grant funds in the amount of $2,500 to Memorial Lutheran and First Presbyterian Churches. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I'd like to. First, I want to thank Patricia Mata. I don't see her here today for all her help on this. And also Pastor Sean is here. He'd like to say a few words about our church and what they do. If that's okay?
Absolutely. Good afternoon. How you doing?
Thank you. I'm doing well. And yourself?
I'm great.
Pastor Sean Pugh, Memorial Lutheran and First Presbyterian Congregation. I would, first of all, like to thank you for this opportunity. The money will be used to help our little food pantry. It's available 24/7, 365 days a year. People can just drive up. People put food in, and diapers, and baby food, and they take it out. And there's across the walkway from that is a free little library, and today we had a car drive up, and one person went to the free library and went to the free pantry, and it was just wonderful. I'd like to also share tomorrow night at, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll have a free spaghetti dinner for the community, too.
Thank you very much. Can you give us the address of the location of your church?
2021st 29th Street.
All right.
It's right by the dog park.
That's by there all the time. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you for what y'all do.
Yes, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. And the Oktoberfest is great. They do that every year. They have a really big Oktoberfest. They're a really good church. And you just combined with another church, correct?
It's Memorial Lutheran and First Presbyterian.
First Presbyterian was the one on Fifth?
Correct.
Seven, six, fifth.
Seven.
Seventh.
Seventh, okay.
So, yes, I've been there five years, and we are doing our best to make a difference in this community. We are here to stay, and we want to do what we can to serve those around us.
Thank you for all you do for our community. Our churches are the backbone of this community. We have so many churches, and they do so much. And you guys are one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Sharp to approve this commission grant fund and the amount of $2,500. That's seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next item up for consideration is to consider and take action on resolution number 2025-130, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong one, 2025-133, authorizing the purchase of an Exterra EX40 slope mower, flail mower attachment, and a Hyundai forklift. Want to hear from Mr. Jack Harrelson in Public Works.
Yes, sir. I think there was a little confusion. I think that with the, maybe with the wording, and Ramari tell me if I'm I'm speaking right, but this should be, it's just for the slope mower itself. So it is a, I mean, that number, you would think we'd get more than one piece of equipment for $177,000, but that is how much a John Deere slope mower costs. So that is what this is for. It's a budgeted item, Mayor. It's to replace one that no longer works. In fact, we had two. One we're getting rid of, and we just broke the axle on the one remaining one. So this is a desperately needed piece of equipment, and that's what it is. The slope mowers are the ones, the equipment that has a mowing deck that's off to the side that can be manipulated to mow the banks of ditches.
And so basically, we're not, we're removing the part where it says the Hyundai forklift. That's not a part of this particular resolution?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, anybody else have any questions about this item? Thank you for that clarification, Jack.
I hope it's supercharged.
It should be.
I'm going to do approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Knoxon to approve, seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack. We're up to the regular items. Regular item eight, A, will consider and take action on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-07, amending the Texas City Code of Ordinances Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations, Construction, Chapter 153 Mechanical Regulations, and Chapter 151 Electricity, Chapter 154 Plumbing, to update all these building permit requirements for insurance and surety bonds. We'll hear from our engineering director and planning, Ms. Kim Golden.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance that is making the requirement for liability insurance applicable to all of our licensed contractors. Right now, it just applies to the building contractors. This will make it also apply to licensed plumbers, electricians, mechanical contractors, and HVAC. The TDLR requires this of them anyway, and it also requires that they give us a certificate that lists Texas City as an additional insured on that liability insurance. So that's one thing it's doing. And the other thing it's doing is also requiring a surety bond of $10,000. Right now, the surety bond is listed as being an alternate for the insurance, and that's not right because they're two different things. Insurance is what you can recover from, like if something gets broken or gets damaged or something like that. The surety bond is in case the contractor doesn't pay his bills and there's a potential to be lien the property, or if he doesn't complete the work. And so it's two different things, and we're also increasing the amount from $5,000 to $10,000. And this is the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Commissioners, are there any additional questions on this agenda item?
I really applaud y'all for, we have a lot of ordinances and for everybody to keep up with the updates. That's really cool. I applaud y'all for what all the department has to do to update the ordinances, just to keep up with the state mandate or insurance mandates. Motion to approve, Mayor, if there's no other comments.
Second.
All right. A motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve on the first reading of this ordinance, and seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Ms. Golden stay right there as we consider eight B, taking action on resolution number 2025-129, authorizing a professional design engineering services agreement with ARC engineers for the Central Park Boulevard project. Ms. Golden?
Yes, sir. So when the county passed its bond program earlier this year, one of the projects that was included was this extension of Central Park Boulevard from FM 2004 to Century Boulevard. ARC engineer had been retained by the city back in the early 2000s to design that project as a half boulevard. The county project is to build it as a full boulevard, and so this is a contract with ARC to allow them to go ahead and proceed with that design. The EDC has appropriated funds to pay for this, so we're going to work the magic with Ms. Cynthia to get the money over here so we can pay for it, but we still need you all to approve the contract.
Magic and money. Well, I wish they went hand in hand. All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a map of that boulevard or no?
I believe. Did we attach one, Ramari? It's really just a straight shot from where...
2004 to Century?
Right, and where they terminate. So Century, Central Park Boulevard is the, now goes by the New School and connects with Lagomar Boulevard under I-45, and then on the east side, it currently goes through Central Park subdivision, and there are long-term plans that will eventually connect with Central Park Boulevard in the Marla Lake subdivision and connect to State Highway 3. So long-term, Central Park Boulevard is going to be a thoroughfare all the way from State Highway 3 into the Lagomar community.
Got it. All right.
Ms. Golden, what's the difference between a full boulevard and a half boulevard?
So a boulevard is two lanes going in each direction, and what they had done was designed just one half, and you were going to have one lane going in each direction. And at that time, I wasn't here, but it's my understanding it was due to kind of the financial constraints at the time that they were going to build that much, and then when funds became invaluable, come back and build the rest of the boulevard. But they designed it, the storm sewer and all was going to be designed for the full boulevard.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
As this boulevard expands to those other areas you mentioned, we're going to be doing this again. You think some point down the line, ask an ARC engineering to do a design?
For what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
As this boulevard continues to expand to the other areas that you mentioned, we're probably going to have them come back and give us additional engineering drawings?
So possibly, this section is actually owned by the EDC, and so that's why we were calling on ARC engineers, or I guess that's why ARC engineers was used before. The other sections will go through probably developer-owned properties, and so those developers may use their own engineers or the mud engineers. They'll still be, they'll still have to get their plans approved by us. So the other sections may or may not be ARC engineers.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Golden. One more item for you. Item C, to consider and take action on ordinance number 2025-18, approving a variance to the 106.25 feet for the minimum lot width requirement for 7509 Wetzel Road.
Did I have a map attached to this one, Ramari?
Yes, I'm just having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay. So this is a lot that is located on Wetzel Road, and so that is in the area that does not have municipal sewer available to it, and so these lots have to have onsite sewer. And you have an ordinance that says for unsued lots, they have to be a minimum of two acres and 200 feet wide. This particular lot exceeds the two acres. It's a little bit more than two acres, but it does not meet the width requirements. It's only 106 feet wide, and that is because in 2019, the property that it was a part of was subdivided basically illegally through a meets and bounds in Texas City. If you're subdividing five acres or less, it's supposed to be by plat for just exactly this reason. And that was not done in the case. Well, subsequent to that, the parcels have been sold to now other parties by the person that illegally divided them. And so this is a non-compliant lot, but they can't do anything about it. It's bounded on two sides by a paved road, so there's no way to acquire additional property. There, in the ordinance that says it has to be two acres and 200 feet wide, it also says the specific requirements for getting a variance, which I gave you in my memo. And the planning board looked at it and determined that all those criteria had been met. And so this variance is in line with your ordinance that allows for these kinds of variances.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Great explanation. Any other questions, commissioners?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second it.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this variance request, and seconded by Commissioner Knoxon. All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. At this time, we move to item eight D, where we consider and take action on resolution number 2025-131, authorizing the rewiring of FM 2004 water well. We'll hear from our Public Works Director, Mr. Harrelson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The middle of last month, we had quite a bit of vandalism at our well site off of... Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the middle of last month, we had quite a bit of vandalism at, at our well site off of, um, two double oh four. In fact, uh, with the help of the police department, we were able to catch the people who did the damage. But, uh, that damage came out to be, uh, exorbitant. I mean, they, we're estimating $450,000. Right now, we're kind of shooting from the hip. We know for a fact it's, uh, approaching $300,000. We're asking that we get, we transfer $450,000 from our utility fund into a capital account so we can make these, uh, repairs. And that's, that's really what we need. They, we've, in fact, we met today, Mayor, in our meeting, um, uh, not only, um, Ms. Rushin has asked us to make sure that we get a, a good detailed accounting of the costs. Right now, we're just trying to get the thing up and running. Uh, it, it is a well that is, it's not used unless we lose our Gulf Coast water. Corbin, jump in if I'm saying something wrong, but, but we typically don't have to use our wells. This is our best well that we have. And right now, it's inoperable. Uh, so they removed the permanent power, uh, wiring system, uh, and then came back the next night and removed from the generator that we had. Uh, and so they really kind of just took everything, our entire ability to, uh, pump water from that system. So that's what this request is, is to transfer money from our utility fund into a capital account so that we can make these repairs.
Thank you, Jack. And again, I do want to, uh, just take a moment to thank our Texas City Police Department for the great investigative work they did in solving, and, and not only solving this case, but bringing those who are responsible for this vandalism, bringing them to justice. They were arrested and you may have seen that, uh, in the news. But, um, we're trying to recover and restore, obviously, what Mr. Harrelson said, restore one of our, uh, biggest reserve, uh, water wells.
Yes, sir. And, and I kind of stopped halfway what I was saying, but Ms. Rushin asked me to get the, the, uh, complete accounting of our costs so that she can turn it into our insurance companies that we can possibly be reimbursed for this cost.
Right.
Sorry about that.
That's a good thing. Well, this is something we need, so I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this item, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. One more for you, Jack.
Yes, sir.
Eight E, to consider and take action on resolution number 2025 dash one three two, awarding the RFP, Request for Proposal 2025 dash four-nine-two, and entering into a contract for Construction Manager at Risk, also known as CMAR, Services for the Municipal Complex. Mr. Harrelson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is, right now, we've been working with an architect to help develop designs and floor plans. Uh, this process right here, uh, will allow us to bring a contractor onboard to help us keep the cost where it needs to be. And then not only that, uh, when we get everything finalized, they will then put the job out for bid. This is a, uh, we went through a process, Construction Manager at Risk means that you actually get your general contractor prior to having the design complete and with, they help you bid the job out. This is a, a common form of, uh, procurement that is used on jobs of the size of the municipal complex. Uh, we've, we went through, uh, we took seven bids. All seven of them were good contractors, but we had four really good ones. Uh, we went through a pretty, uh, lengthy, um, evaluation process, interviewed four of them. We, so we shortlisted. That was part of the, 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 the evaluation process. And our number one rated contractor is Spal Glass. It came, it was a tight race between them and another contractor, but Spal Glass was the number one rated contractor. And it just so happens that Spal Glass is the contractor that actually built this building some fifty, sixty, seventy years ago.
Still in business.
So we're, we're, that's what we'd like to do is, is authorize, uh, selecting Spal Glass as the number one rated contractor and, uh, approving the mayor to enter a contract with those guys.
Thank you, Jack. Commissioners, any questions on this issue?
No, sir.
If they think they're the best, I agree with that. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Knoxen. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack. I, I will, I do want to thank, uh, those people who, uh, sat in on the process of opening, uh, those bids, reviewing those packets from those CMARs who submitted. Uh, it was a pretty lengthy process, but, uh, I think it was, um, everybody did their due diligence and, and scored them, um, according to, um, what those metrics were. And as, as Mr. Harrelson said, it was very close. Great, great, uh, CMARs out there who have been responsible for major projects in municipalities all across the state of Texas. So it was a tough decision, but I don't think we could go wrong with any of them. Uh, Spal Glass is the, thanks to your vote just now, is the, uh, recipient of that bid. And so it, it does feel good a little bit to be able to move forward with the company that is responsible for building this current building. So it's no stranger to Texas City, they're not only this, but some other projects that they've worked on locally. At this time, we start Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Knoxen, if you have any comments, you can share with our community at this time.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, uh, just today I had the privilege of being the guest speaker for, uh, TC ISD's Foundation for the Future Leagues Program. Like I said, it was a great privilege to be, um, recommended to be the speaker there. Um, it's great, great to see the students, um, you know, taking that step of becoming early, uh, leaders. Uh, a few things I touched on was, you know, your why, what's your why? You know, when things get tough, what can you, uh, what's going to motivate you to continue moving forward? And I talked about, um, you know, having a plan. Plan's going to change, but, you know, as long as you have a great attitude and remember your why, you can continue to push forward. So it was just a, a great, uh, great opportunity for me. Uh, like I said, I feel very privileged to be there. Mayor Chuck Doyle showed up to see me give the speech, so that made me feel pretty special. And, um, yeah, just, just a great opportunity. So I was happy to be there.
He was just making sure you weren't messing up.
Check it out on him. I must be good. He left after this.
No, in all seriousness, thank you very much. The Leagues Program, working in conjunction with the foundation, has been a great program for the youth of our community. And thank you, uh, Commissioner Knoxen, for being accessible to, to, uh, pour into them. Anything else?
He liked what I said. He said I, I epitomized.
I'm sure he did. Thank you. Commissioner Bowie?
Uh, Commissioner Knoxen and myself have been re-energized, uh, now that we have capital funds to proceed with our streetlight initiative. So the plan is to continue to count out our police officers to help us identify, uh, those lights that are out. But we're also going to approach the superintendent so that we can get the bus drivers involved with particularly dark areas where kids are waiting to catch the bus. Uh, it's come up as a concern. So we want to work with her in trying to make sure we map out, uh, straight, uh, and safe travel to and from school for our students. So we're, we're really excited about that. It's been a year and so we're, we're back to re-energize.
Yes. Thank you very much. That, that's a great initiative and it's definitely needed. Probably not as much as now where we're, it's daylight at six o'clock. But then there is a time of the year to where it's dark at seven o'clock in the morning. These kids are standing beneath those, uh, streetlights that aren't working and so, but we thank you very much for, for that. And I'm glad we can move forward with it. Anything else? Commissioner Garza?
No, thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sharp?
Uh, yeah. I'll thank the police department for doing such a good job for Halloween, having the issues. It was great. And also yesterday, I went to the minister's leaders' breakfast. And our own Mayor Johnson gave a beautiful tribute to Reverend Daniels. It was really moving. It was something. Thank you.
Thank you for being there, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to, with Veterans Day coming up, I want to thank all our veterans that might be out here. So it's, uh, uh, we wouldn't be here today without our veterans. So we want to thank all of our veterans. So, uh, and on Sunday at two o'clock at the Doyle Center, we're having our Rotary, uh, uh, Rotary event at their, at the Doyle Center and honoring our, our, uh, veterans. So it's, it's a great event. If you had never been out there, um, we have the blocker kids that come and sing and it's, it's an awesome event. So, uh, please try to make it if you can on Sunday at two o'clock at the Doyle Center. And yesterday at Rotary, Chris Alessandri was at, I think he said he was eating breakfast somewhere and, and he ran into a man that had a hat on that said he was, had fought in World War II and Korea. And he said, I went up to him and I invited him. And he said, uh, and so I hope he comes. And those are our true heroes that are going to be there. So thank you to all our veterans. So I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. That's all. And Deandre, you did a great job today. So thank you.
Did you hear that, Mayor?
I, I was there. I can attest for him. He did, he did a good job. He kept the kids' attention and they weren't throwing things at him. So he did good. Yeah.
I just needed a witness other than.
Yeah, I was there. He did good.
Uh, but thank you very much. In fact, why don't we have, if we have any veterans in the audience, would you go ahead and stand so we can, uh, just acknowledge you and thank you, any veterans in the audience? Real quick, tell us what branch, what branch you serve in.
Army.
Army, all right.
Army.
Army.
Navy.
Navy.
Army.
Army. All right. Thanks, Reynolds. Thank you all for your service and what you've done for our country and what you continue to do for our city. Appreciate that. We're looking forward to a great Veterans Day program on, um, Sunday. Uh, all I have for everybody is to remind us that tomorrow is Navigation Day. This is our third annual Navigation Day where we address the needs of our homeless and unsheltered population here in the city of Texas City. I want to go ahead and thank all of the agencies that have been working with Patricia Mata, as well as have been a part of the mayor's task force on homelessness, who are coming together tomorrow to, uh, again, we can't necessarily solve the plight of the unsheltered in one day, but we can give them an opportunity to come in and get the resources that they may need to better their situation. And we've been able to do that for the past few years. And so I want to remind everybody, that's from 11:00 to 2:00 tomorrow, and, uh, we're just looking forward, uh, to a great event. We're going to have some words from our Economic Development Corporation Director, Ms. Kristen Edwards.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to make this group aware of two events that will be happening at our Sixth Street Community Plaza next week. The first will be on Thursday, November 13th, from four to seven PM. We'll be hosting a fundraiser event for the United Way of Galveston County Mainland, where Park Lane Jewelry, very similar to Kendra Scott, but a little more affordable, will be offering 50% of all proceeds to go back to United Way. So it's a great time to Christmas shop, great time to get you some holiday sparkle. Um, we're looking forward to that immensely. And that's all in an effort to get more community entities thinking about utilizing that community plaza going forward. We will also have a concert on Saturday, November 15th in the evening. Uh, that'll be from six to eight-thirty PM, and it's Mango Punch that'll be playing. And we will also be doing a food and coat drive that evening. So if anybody has any, uh, non-perishable food items, jackets that you're not using, we would love to see you donate those. And Ms. Barbara White is going to take those off our hands and get those donated to people in need. So those things coming up, please plan to attend and thank you for your continued support.
Well, thank you very much. And, uh, thank you for reminding me that I have another announcement.
That's good, because I was, I was your backup, so it's a good thing.
I, I, I wasn't going to let this meeting end without making this announcement. I was just seeing if you was paying attention. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Barbara White, the city champion of fundraising and the city champion of community service projects, is in need of frozen turkeys, as well as boxed stuffing, canned sweet potatoes, canned green beans, and packages of turkey gravy by November 14th. Ms. Barbara White is making food boxes for the needy students who are attending Lamarck and Texas City Public Schools in Texas City Independent School District. This is your opportunity to help Ms. Barbara White help other people, as she does each year and has been doing for the past 34 years in the city of Texas City. So if you want to be a part and always ask, how can I help? Ms. Barbara White is collecting those items, uh, at several locations, but specifically right here in City Hall. There is a collection bin in the foyer for those items. Ms. White, did I do okay?
That was.
Okay, all right. So make sure you bring those items to help Ms. White so she can help others in our community. All right. Is there any other staff members who have any announcements? All right. Here from Ms. Jennifer Litt, our Director of Communications.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I first want to thank everybody for Making Touch a Truck such a success. There's not really a city department that wasn't directly involved, and I appreciate all the work. We had, I think, a record-setting year. We had about 110 vehicles sign up to participate. We had over 50 vendors, about 10 food trucks, and I think around 75 volunteers, who were mostly high school students. So it was a great turnout. It was a really fun day, and it was a ton of work. So I appreciate all of you. Um, I gave my department about 12 whole hours to rest before we jumped into the next thing, which is Shop Local Bingo. It's going on right now. So all you have to do to play is save your receipts after you shop or eat in Texas City. And if you fill up your bingo card, then you will be in the drawing to win free Whataburger for a year, as well as a prize basket that's worth about $2,000 and counting, all donated from local businesses. So be on the lookout for that. Save your receipts and it's a good excuse just to shop and eat. So you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For more information on the, uh, Shop Local Bingo, we have some information on it in our Texas City Insider. This can be found at our library. Uh, we have these newsletters that have been out, the November edition. And at many upcoming events, we mentioned the Navigation Day, but I also want to mention the First Mayor's Bike Ride. The Mayor's Bike Ride will be held on November 22nd at nine o'clock in the morning. All of you, get your, get your bicycles out, oil those chains and everything, adjust your handlebars if you haven't ridden in years. But come on out and ride with us. We'll be riding around town and we're going to release that route online pretty soon so everybody can see where we're going. It's a part of the initiative, Movement is Medicine, the Mayor's 2025 Health Initiative. We want all ages welcome who can ride a bike on their own. All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. All right. Thank you very much. Can I, can you get this as well? This is the proclamation that. You want to leave it to Priya? Okay. I can give it to her. I can give it to her.